Sitting there watching my son.
I'll tell her. I'm gonna tell her not to do it. Tara.
I'm doing the pledge, I got it.
She wants to do the pledge.
Why?
I'll do it tonight, my kid comes.
Yes. Now that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
You're doing the pledge. You're doing. When's your kid doing it?
I'm gonna probably have her come in about a few weeks before she's in.
Alright.
I have to ask for her very busy schedule.
Alright, we're gonna call the July 18th meeting to order. Ms. Zirinsky has the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Zambo, would you please call the law?
Mr. Kuzas.
Present.
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mr. Harrow.
Not here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Here.
All presidents except Mrs. Furrow.
Yeah, Mrs. Furrow called. Apparently she's stuck in traffic or something. She may or may not get the call in. Alright, now we'll go to a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Second. You have to get it. Call, uh, vote. Acclamation, I'm sorry. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Good. Done. Confirmation of appointments. Mr. McGee.
Okay. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated thereafter. Area ag- area agency on aging advisory council. Term to expire June 30th, 2021. Paul Nagy. Workforce board Lehigh Valley appointments Catherine Bailey. Term to expire June 30th, 2021. And Michael Woodland. Term to expire June 30th, 2023. So moved.
Thank you. These were discussed at the committee. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzas.
Yes.
Mr. Dees.
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, time to time, groups will come before council and they'll ask for time to address council on an issue. This group that we're gonna have up contacted and would like to have a few minutes to talk to us. I know in the middle of summer, sometimes we hit a lull with a lot of things on our agenda, but I thought this might be a good time. And I told them that they could come. They have 15 minutes. And if there's more to it, we'll, we'll, we can arrange for them to come back. But as you can see on your sheet, it's regarding crumbling infrastructure and how the county can pay for it. I don't know about the second part of that. We're usually pretty touchy. But anyway, what are the... Oh, the country. I'm sorry. I read county. Wow.
We're gonna pay for the whole infrastructure?
You had me worried right out of the gate. But, okay, I'm sorry. And I have Mr. Rosenblatt. Who wants to lead this off? You could come up and... You did get some handouts? So you have, you have 15 minutes.
Right. We appreciate the invitation.
You're welcome.
And we're actually gonna go in reverse order.
However you wanna do it.
I just helped set it up. So I'm gonna begin by introducing Lisa Datalia, who's from Bethlehem and from the area, and she really helped set this up. So we'll begin with Lisa.
All I would ask is when you come up to identify yourself so that clerk of council can record it.
Hi, my name is Lisa Datalia. I live in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. I've been a member of the Lehigh Valley for 27 years now. And back in May, I joined with the National Coalition to implement a national infrastructure bank. And we met with congresspeople in Washington, DC. And they were very receptive to our plan because as most people know, municipalities, counties, states, and the country is in dire need of massive infrastructure funding. Everyone agrees that we need infrastructure funding, but they have a problem with how to pay for it. Our plan has a, our proposal is a plan of how to pay for it. It has been done in the past four times. And my colleagues that are with me here tonight will go into the details about that. So we can be reminded of our history, especially in the Lehigh Valley with the second national bank that was created that built the canals and the coal industry and the infrastructure that is the Lehigh Valley. It was, we are generating and garnering support from councils all across the country, mostly, and states. Mostly here in Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, and Ohio. My colleagues have been traveling around the country, mostly on the eastern border right now, to city councils, municipal offices. We were just in Allentown with the county executive. I recently met with Lamont McClure in his office to talk about this plan and this proposal. Basically, our ask is to get a congressperson to introduce a resolution. Everyone knows that we need it. Once a person of their, that statue, a representative of our government introduces the resolution, a number of people will get on board and co-sponsor it, and the momentum will have been built to get it started and funded. I'd like to introduce you to Stan Forsick. He worked for 30 years for Amtrak and is an engineer and has some infrastructure knowledge. And we'll begin to talk about how the bank will be started.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stan Forsick. As Lisa just pointed out, I am a former Amtrak executive with over 30 years' experience. I was the first director of finance for the Northeast Corridor. I ended my career there as the principal officer of energy management for the national, for national operations. I've also worked as a business development director for a large energy commodity supplier and a consulting firm, energy consulting firm out of Philadelphia. I was VP of energy management. More recently, I started my own firm. I've been working for Exelon, working for Goldman Sachs, and I've done some work as acting chief of staff for a mid-sized engineering firm. What Lisa was pointing out is very true. There is a crisis in the United States today. I know we're talking about immigration and different things like that, but there's an infrastructure crisis. Most of the infrastructure is owned by municipalities and states, and it's crumbling. It was built in the 19th and 20th century. It's now the 21st century, and we haven't really repaired, renewed, or done, or brought the infrastructure up to a state of good repair. The American Society of Civil Engineers estimates that it will take $4.8 trillion to fix the infrastructure here in the United States. Cornell University also said that if we didn't do something quickly on the $4.8 million, that within five to eight years, it would quadruple, and we'd have a $16 trillion price tag. So it's a problem that we all have. It's not just here in this county. It's not just here in Pennsylvania. It's all over. We've talked to the folks in New York City, Newark, New Jersey, Trenton, New Jersey. We were at Harrisburg three weeks ago. We talked to your state representatives. And as Lisa pointed out, we've been talking to the people on a federal level. We will be in Washington, DC before they recess next week to do two days of discussions with a lot of representatives down there. But the critical issue is we, everybody agrees that we have an infrastructure problem. But everybody shakes their head, turns around, and says, "Well, I don't, I don't know what to do. It's way too much money. We can't do anything." Well, the time is now. We have to do something. Think about this. And all we're asking for you is to listen and hopefully maybe endorse what we're doing or put through a resolution so that we can get legislation on it. But think about this. You are the principal officers of this county. If something happens, if something goes wrong, the people in this county are gonna, they, they're not, they're not gonna know what to do, and they're gonna be looking for their government representatives to do something about it. Allentown had a water problem. There are other cities that have water problems. There's lead going into the water. There's gas distribution systems that are failing. If something happens, alright, they're gonna be looking to you. Because the average person, if they put plug in to a receptacle, doesn't understand that there could be 10 or 20 generating stations that are putting power to them. They don't understand that. So I'll leave you with that. Alright? We have a problem. We know how to fix it. The fix is a national infrastructure bank, and my colleagues will go through that in more detail for you. And I'm just gonna introduce Angela Vullo, who will get into it a little bit further. And thanks for your time. If you have any questions, we'll be here for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Angela Vullo. I'm from Northern Virginia. I'm a grassroots organizer.
Could you spell your name for the...
Yes, V like Victor, U L L O. My first name is Angela. I work with the Our Revolution in Northern Virginia. I'm on the steering committee. This is the Bernie Sanders Group, which was formed after the 2016 election. We represent four congressional districts. Basically, what we are urging people to do is to think about the situation as a national emergency. It is life-threatening, whether you're thinking about the collapse of infrastructure or the effects of, that we haven't invested in that direction in 50 years, that we now have an opioid and drug overdose situation that is off the charts. And this is absolutely a result of the despair that has been created in the country since we last had a mission, which was the Kennedy Space Program. Coincidentally, this is the week, the 50th anniversary of the moon landing. And we have not significantly invested into our future, to the point that we have created now, you know, roads, bridges, you know, rail tracks, water systems, that literally some of it goes back 150 years. This is untenable in the United States of America. And despite the fact, claims from the president and others that we're in a recovery, this is, couldn't be further from the truth. We have 40 million Americans living in poverty. We have stagnant wages. We have 100 million people that have dropped out of the workforce. Productivity is at an all-time low of 0.5%. If you compare this to what it was during Franklin Roosevelt and the World War II mobilization, it was 3.5%. And it added 17% to GDP. So what we're talking about right now is, you know, negativity in whichever way you wanna think about it. What we're proposing is that the urgency come from the states and cities where we know they can't meet their economic needs without Band-Aid solutions. There has to be bold moves by the Congress in the tradition of Franklin Roosevelt and John Kennedy so that we can quell the hysteria in the states. We get a federal infusion of capital into the states. We bring the, the technologies up to the level that are required, whether you're talking about high-speed rail, nuclear power, rebuilding the entire water system of the United States. And we bring people together in a unified way, declare ourselves Americans again, and rebuild the United States as one nation. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wanna come up and introduce yourself.
I'll wrap up. Stuart Rosenblatt, I'm on that thing. I'm from DC and do a lot of the work in Congress and elsewhere. On the bank itself, how it gets funded, there's a handout on, on the bank. And at the end of it, there's a flow chart which says, "Where is the money?" And, "Show us the money." And the way we're gonna do this is identical to the way all the previous banks have been funded. There's $22 trillion of outstanding US Treasury debt. We're gonna offer the holders of the debt, who are currently getting 2%, and even that's falling, the right to exchange it for stock in the bank. They'll get double the interest federally insured. That'll capitalize the bank. We think at about three to four trillion. We can also open it up for investment by, you know, banks, unions, pension funds, et cetera. We'll then monetize the debt exactly the way previous banks did and issue long-term, very low-interest loans, 1%, 2%. And work with county, cities, authorities, the works, and build everything, everything, and build the country out of this mess. So that's the basic idea. It's been done four times. It works. And if you have questions, or a few questions, this is a good time. You have a good group here, and then we'll let you get back to your agenda.
Well, thank you, and thank you for adhering to what we, we had asked. He did give us handouts, and I know, you know, you certainly read them. If council has...
Just, just real quick question. So I got two of this, we got two of the same, so I'm not sure.
That was deliberate. No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, where are the other ones?
Uh, wait.
We got two of a bill, and we need one.
One says public service.
Yeah, we didn't get that.
Public service.
We got, we have four of these down here.
They need public service.
We need some public service here.
Well, we wanted to keep you in the dark. If any of you were in Lower Manhattan a couple of nights ago, you were in the dark because of this.
Well, that's probably because Mr. Durk is with us now. That's a long story.
I'm gonna tell Andrew Cuomo that. That will solve the big problem.
Tell him to talk to Mr. Durk.
Sorry about, sorry about that. We appreciate it. If there are any questions from anybody else or comments, this is a good time.
Did anybody have a question right now? Mr. Kuzas?
Not, this may be a comment more than a question. I think there's no, no question that there's a need for infrastructure improvements in this country. I mean, in this county, we've had a bridge over a creek that's been out for a year. So I think locally, we're experiencing the same thing. I think your proposal for funding is interesting, but I think from my perspective, it's a shame that this country has money for infrastructure in places like Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria, and to protect West Germany from Soviet tanks. So there, there's plenty of money out there. It's just a matter of prioritizing it. And I, if it were me and if I were proposing a budget, I would like to move that money that we spend in Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria, and these other places.
Useless.
And that should be shifted into the Department of Transportation budget. That, that's how this should be done. This scheme with bonds, I, I don't know.
You're right. Go ahead. If I may, I, I'd just, I'd like to answer that question. One of the problems that we have is something along the lines of what you're talking about. Because that involves the appropriations process. And when you have to go through an appropriations process, you know that as well as I do, that if you needed that bridge fixed and it was gonna cost $5 million, that hypothetical example. And someone in Wyoming or Idaho had a $5 million bridge that they needed fixed, you've got competing projects that need to be done. So it's not gonna be done, it's gonna be done by who's gonna scream the loudest or who's gonna pay off a certain amount of people. So if you use the appropriations process, it may not work. Yes, you're right. We spend a lot of money overseas. But let me point out to you, overseas has, doesn't really have the infrastructure problems we have. Why don't they have the infrastructure problems we have? Because in the 1940s, everything was decimated, and they created their infrastructure only 50 years ago, not 150 years ago. And the money, how they got the money to fix their infrastructure is the same model that Hamilton created and the same model that we passed out to you tonight. And that is for a national infrastructure bank. It works. It always ended in the black. It always came to term in the black, which means that the country's not gonna go broke. There's not gonna be competition for projects because every project will be done. I hope that answers your question.
Oh, Mr. Lo.
Is, is there a, a start date or an end date, a end date for this? I mean, rather, is there an amount of decades that you're looking to have to span on? Is it a decade?
I don't know. Go ahead.
Number one, and number two, where is the pushback coming from? What is the downside to this? Where are you finding opposition?
We have not found opposition. We have had no person, no legislature, no legislator come in and say, "I'm gonna champion this." That's where the holdup is. Everybody agrees that this is the right way to do it. Everyone agrees that that is the right amount of money. But nobody, okay, wants to champion it. We have people that we've talked to on, in Washington and in the states that say, "I'll second it, but I won't put it in." And that's where it is. Now, your original question about term, well, the term will be created when the legis, when the legislation gets put in and, and Congress agrees, yes, we're gonna start the bank. But we're gonna create the term for the bank, which could be 10, 20, 30 years. So that, it's a din, ours is a dynamic document, and that stuff will be put in if somebody signs off on the legislation. What we're asking you folks to do is consider endorsing or putting through a resolution for the bank. Because the more people we have that get the word and get the word correct, you can go to your Congress folks and say, "We want it." Thank you so much.
I just wanted to ask, have you, have you talked to Congresswoman Susan Wild?
Yes, we have. We talked to her, chief of staff.
We, we have spoken to her directly.
Okay.
She's interested. We're not direct, but we had a long...
So she's interested, and you want us to help nudge her a little bit more? Is that what it is? Just push her right over the edge? Gotcha.
Nudging is good. Nudging is good. Nudging is good.
We've had with her senior people in Congress as well. There's a lot of interest. And we are here, and we're doing this with members of Congress, all of them, for a meeting with their county councils, city councils, state legislatures.
But specifically, if you have a congressperson interested, yes, okay.
We need someone to put in the legislation. That's what we need.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, what we'll do is, we will, I would urge council to review the information we've been given. And we'll, there'll be probably a discussion. People will be thinking about it, and we'll, we'll let you know. We'll contact you. If you have more information, you can contact the clerk of council, and, you know, we'll see what we can do at this end.
And we appreciate that. And, and, you know, you can't get everything in in 15 minutes. If you want us to come back and do a full-blown presentation, we will do that for you.
I'll discuss it, and we'll, we'll see where we can go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, I handed out a group of cards.
Is your card the contact information?
Yeah.
For the group?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much.
I think we all got one.
And Lisa, we, we know, Ms. Datalia. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you abiding by the, our agreement, and thank you very much. We will, everybody will review your information. Alright, now, courtesy of the floor, and I think, I have Lisa signed in, but I believe you...
You already talked.
We already talked. Okay. I have a Kelly Elman, is it? Yes. Please, you have, if you would come up and introduce yourself to the clerk and give her your name, and you have five minutes. Oh, with the mic, I'm sorry.
My name is Kelly Elman. I'm an employee of Greystale Nursing Home. I've been there for 20 years. I'm here about the staffing crisis that we face right now in Greystale. I'm a little nervous, so I'd like to read what I have to say.
Just relax. Nobody up here is gonna be yelling. We'll give, I, that's why I have the hammer. They get the hammer if they get mean.
I'm here on my own account. I'm not affiliated with anything. I'm here as an employee. I'm here on behalf of the residents. There is no organization or individual quality more important than integrity. Integrity can be difficult to attain and keep, yet nearly impossible to regain once lost. The compliance integrity of our home is based on the actions and decisions of every individual employee. This is a direct insert from Greystale's Compliance and Code of Ethics. These words encourage me to stand here today as an advocate for the residents who call Greystale home. I approached the board today with my petition with approximately 200 signatures, recognizing there is indeed a continuing staffing crisis at Greystale despite initiatives made by upper management. I am asking for the opportunity to speak with the council further in a private setting. We, the undersigned, ask the board to further investigate this urgent matter. We suggest obtaining employee and family feedback survey results conducted by management. Inquire about the rise of employee resignations and review exit interview testimony. Reassess current initiatives implemented by the director of nursing and their effectiveness. Find a solution to what management has failed to accomplish. Thank you.
And let me just say that you have the right, you have a handout?
I have the petition with the 200 signatures.
Okay. Do you want, you can give a tear. You have the right, as any citizen and or employee, to contact council members directly. And you can get that through Ms. Zambo. As a group, we can't privately, we, we're public, a public meeting.
I meant like with me as representation of the group.
Well...
Like to speak further with someone, if that's via email or...
Well, you, the chairman of the Human Services Committee is, is Ms. Hevner, Hefner, I'm sorry.
I would like to say that I'm all, I'm all new to this, so I don't know the process.
No, you're fine. You didn't do anything wrong.
Basically, my, what I'm saying is my petition is an agreement that there is a staffing crisis. Asking for acknowledgement and to look into what other initiatives could be looked at.
I would say, though, going forward, I would, I would put, say, get in contact with Ms. Vargo Heffner, and she'll guide you along. Are you alright with that, Ms. Hevner? Alright, there we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, hold on. Mr. Kuzas?
Are you a member of a collective bargaining unit?
Yes.
I, I believe that that may be the, a, a channel for, to address some of your issues.
I have tried that. That's been void.
I mean, you're free to talk to us, but yeah, I mean, ultimately speaking, at, for our, from our perspective, the bargaining unit is who speaks for you.
Right. I, I understand.
But you're free to talk to someone as an individual. I mean, if they wanna talk to you.
But that avenue is not working. I've gone to my administration. I follow my chain of command, and that has not worked either. And 200 signatures represent that. So out of desperation, on my own account, I am here, even though I face possible retaliation in the future. I promise you, this is an extreme matter to address. I can give you testimony. I can give you, you know, statements. I can give you different things that we have been exposed to. The other day, I stayed and walked the units to get my petition, to talk with people, what's going on. I went to a floor that had two aides, the 50 residents, on 3 to 11. Two aides. That's not even in accordance with the PA nursing state law. So I, if I, just allow me that opportunity to speak with you, please.
Alright.
Thank you.
And, and, I've got, now, hold on, Mr. Dees.
So, I think everyone recognizes that there's, there's a, you know, shortage of, of staff over there, and by accounts, trying to make measures to fill that. Do you have any specific recommendations that you or the group has come up with that has not been tried, that you think, or?
Well, there are several things that were done that, you know, to me was ridiculous, like they took away Perdiem and then brought Perdiem back. They took away a staffing position on every floor. That's their intent. So we normally, for 20 years at Greystale, had seven aides per unit. It's been that way for eternity. With this new management, it went down to six. Now, we are sometimes working with five. And I would like to say, my shift, my floor, has been staffed pretty well. So this is not even, I'm not gaining anything from this. 3 to 11, right now, is a crisis. In addition to the issues at hand, I don't know if yous are familiar with the Relias training that we're being told we have to do. They are pulling employees off units that are already short to do this Relias training. Now, they only have three aides, and then they're pulling aides off the unit to do this Relias training and leaving one aide, two aides to a floor. That is not okay. And I don't have all the solutions. I have brought up many solutions. I sat on many committees. I've talked to the DON several times. I've talked to human resource. I've been in the union. I tried that avenue. Nothing works. And that's why I'm here. I don't have a permanent solution, but I know whatever they are doing, the staffing crisis has worsened. It hasn't gotten better. So now I'm here out of desperation, hoping that maybe we could look at another, other initiatives, you know, or do something more. I promise you, behalf of these residents, to please...
We, you know what, and you've come here, and I, and certainly there should be no retaliation or retribution. If any of us heard of that, we believe me that would be a problem. I don't believe there will be. I don't, I think they're doing what they think is best, if you disagree. Again, it's very hard for us because your, your bargaining unit is, is the... It's very hard for us because your, your bargaining unit is, is, is the conduit. Having said that, though, we've established about meeting with-
Phone number on there.
And you, we'll be sure that you're able to get ahold of this.
I don't have my email on there, but my phone number is on there. That's all I want, is the opportunity to speak with someone. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Now, I don't have anyone else written on the agenda, uh, or on courtesy floor. Is there anyone who would like to address council under courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one? Um, and we'll make sure that, uh, we get copies of your petition to, to everybody here, so we- All right. Uh, now, before I move on, uh, county executive report. Mr. McClure, you have a report.
Hello. If you weren't convinced by your own external audit and if you weren't convinced by the recent announcement that you have a triple A1 bond rating, um, I, I would say to you, now be convinced that you are, you are, you are doing a good job fiscally managing your county. Um, and I say that, I, I give you that compliment because during the financing, you allowed us a provision in the financing ordinance to refinance those bonds we recently purchased in order to do the forensic center and buy the human services building. And, um, I am happy to report to you that we have refinanced those bonds. We saved eight point nine-two percent on the interest rate. And that's going to be four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars over the life of that loan. So you are doing an excellent job. I'd like to commend, um, our, uh, fiscal affairs, uh, director, Mr. Barron, and his, his counterpart at, uh, P F M, um, Scott Shear, uh, who, these guys came up with this really great idea and, uh, you, you supported them and, uh, you have almost a half a million dollars more tonight to show for it. So, uh, good job.
Mr. McClure, would you like us to do a council certificate of recognition for Mr.?
No, no, I, no. No, but, no, but I, no, but I did a proclamation for you and I'll bring it, and I'll bring it. I'll bring it next month. Uh, to continue on, I think that you're doing a terrific job, uh, running your county. Um, as of yesterday, our pension fund was at a record four hundred and eighteen point one million dollars. This is the highest it's ever been. And what I think we need to start thinking about, and I've been talking about this for a long time, but we put in ten to twelve million dollars every year, which represents more than a mill of taxation. And so I think it would be appropriate for us as we move forward. And let me stop myself right here and tell you, I am not suggesting that we don't make substantial annual contributions to the pension fund. I am not suggesting that. But what I am suggesting is that, um, the current taxpayer may be bearing more of the financial burden for the legacy costs than they otherwise might be. Maybe it's not twelve million or ten million. Maybe it's more appropriately eight. But this is something we'll have to decide together going forward. And of course, in, in, uh, moving along with the retirement board as well and what their views on, on the subject matter are. But fourteen, it's the highest it's ever been. I believe you have the second-best pension fund in Pennsylvania and, uh, congratulations to you. With that, that concludes, uh, my report. And, uh, Mr. President, I would suggest, uh, the necessity for a, an executive session because of litigation.
I need litigation?
Yes.
All right. Uh, the executive has requested an executive session, uh, pending, uh, regarding litigation. It is seven oh four and we will go into executive- Oh, we need a vote. I'm sorry. I forget.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Go in executive.
Executive session. You said we need a vote.
Second.
All right. All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, no pens, no papers. You can keep your hearing aids on, but that's about it.
It came to me that the acid was straight up in the air. And supposedly we had to dispose of it because Saturday they put the first color on, you know, the epoxy. They put one coat, but what they find is that's just what I'm wondering. You know, the table covers and all of that. But that is not too long ago. Um, far, but to tell you that could cost you time. She went there. It was like, I can say that. Okay, all right. It's right here. Buddy wants to talk. Buddy pushed me into the corner. Uh, whatever, it's okay. You know. It's good. Don't you see pictures of that pool, baseball?
Yeah.
No, I'm picturing. I have those before. I mean, the person on the wall. How long? That's forty-two. I think twenty-two. Two of the wires to the body. It's weird. It was in there. It was just so. Well, the shadows. You know, it's a book. It's, uh, it's a word. What do you? Well, I don't know. I think it could be. It's, uh, it's, uh, she has all the things, okay. That's what I see. Dude. He's smoking. The guy is like, you know, I am one of those babies who, um, stay. I'm a baby. I'm a baby. I'm a baby. I'm a baby. I'm a little child. I'm a little child. It's a mom. Oh, boy. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a lot of time. So, because, you know, your eyes are seeing. I've got pretty still. Uh, how long? We generally, uh, like to charge this. So, I charge. I will make them off. They're all expensive.
No, they're, uh, they're discussing. Right. Okay. I'm not gonna say I'm on the table.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Both of, both of them have, uh, it's not clear. Uh, it has to have an extra. That's why I said that. But it's already, uh, it's already in order. But then, uh, we're trying to justify this. It's great. It's great. It's all this. It's always in our system. It's always forcing things to work. It's because. It's still working. There's, uh, there's, uh, there's, uh, six hundred. So, so. A lot of her experience. She's doing her contribution. I don't know. The first one, the first thing. I'm on for it. So, there's probably just a few. Whatever word. What, what kind of, you know, it's six months. The train's important. What does that mean? We, uh, it's not necessary to say that because. All right. Also, that's in the last, there's some kind of crap. All the cameras. I'm just, uh, there's. Two of the issue that's signed. That's, uh. I only get it done if you got ten out of the ready after a half. There's a lot of, so, uh, it's pushing a lot in Chicago. There, there are a lot of. I think you know what the track is. It's similar. There are various. The question to it. To move along. I mean, they're all like, uh, it's, but. You know, they're already. Except for some of the other ones. So, the response. Do you have, yeah, well, they were four. Do you, words again, you're a contractor. Yeah. It was pretty, I, I was, I was actually, I was actually lying to someone. I was doing, I'm talking through, I'm talking through, I'm reading.
David, it's a different.
So, I'm reading this and I'm reading, and I have to. Out loud. Uh, yeah. It was lying. Interesting. I have a question. I don't know. Or, uh, this is the, uh, this is Mary. Mary Jones. Mary Love. Mary Richter. Right. That's all. That's all. It was all, uh, yeah. Oh, you want to, you want to excuse us? Yes. He goes, uh, he's. Probably be a kind of, you know, kind of correctional. She said, um, she said, maybe, probably, um, I'm very, uh, probably. She was sort of able to relate every night. He, it, it was like. That was, yeah, this was like, uh, Rick. That's Rick. Yes. Larry. Larry. She, she, uh. She put it in there. Well, that's cool. I didn't, I didn't get to read that. Once we did, we didn't read that, I need to go back to it. Can you go back? I was like, oh, my God. That's what I read. Really did that. Kathy, of course. I don't know. Of course, you. Uh, there's a, the law, so, that, sure. Please. I think all of it. She did all the action. Did a couple, a case, a case. This is a true question. I think that's. I wonder. We get. What do you mean? Is it that, um, those, uh, they're, they're going to settle off the, uh, attorney. I hear you're going to, certainly, uh, we're starting. Yeah. That's why I, yes. Obviously, we have a question. I was going to say, uh. We're asking a lot of. Just, uh. We're going to. And, uh, I'm trying to take advantage. Uh, to, just, uh, one.
We didn't have that in our bid. So, at that time, recognizing that we were originally planning on having the bids, or moreover, the contracts before you at the last finance meeting, we extended out the bid period so that although we would lose a week or so, at that point, we would at least make sure that we didn't spend 12 months arguing over something we could've fixed in two weeks. The concern there is very simply that we want to keep this project moving, and one of the more important things that both council members, Lot and McGee, would agree is getting the building under roof by the winter, so that we can keep this project moving, can keep this on schedule and on track. So I had reached out to the president at that time to ask him if he would be open to a meeting in between of either a committee of the whole at your next council meeting, or a discussion of holding a extra meeting for finance, so that we don't give up much more time than we have to on this, so we can keep the project moving. And we will be receiving the bids tomorrow, so we will have a better sense then as to the necessity of this request, but just wanted to explain to you what we were thinking and what our concerns are.
It was my belief or feeling at least, and I'm open to your ideas, that we would do it at the next council meeting, maybe right before, whether you want to incorporate it into the council meeting, we certainly could say it's the best time since we're all available to do it that way. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Sounds good to me.
All right, so why don't we do that? We'll set that up as a pre-meeting, pre-meeting forensic center meeting.
How would that be logistically?
It's a committee.
Well, she has, we have-
She has human services, but I think economic is going to be canceled.
How much time?
Yeah, so you got, we got a hole we could fill.
Economic development?
No, economic development may be canceled.
Oh, I see.
That's why we, that's why we added that extra piece with the grants the last time. So we would have, not for that though, but it just kind of-
Just works out.
All right, so we don't need to have economic development? All right, why don't we, why don't we do that as a, let's call it a finance committee meeting, it's, we're talking about money, so a special one.
Is there any reason, I mean, could we just not put it on the agenda as part of the council meeting, like, presentation? As opposed to a separate meeting altogether, I mean, just have it on the agenda of the council meeting?
Well, we can, I mean, I was, you know, listening, we can do, that's why I wanted to suggest, certainly we can do that, we don't have to have a special meeting, but, you know, we want to have this discussion, we can put it on as, as an item of, I don't-
How long do you think it would take? I mean-
The likeliness would be that we would just be, at that point, passing the contracts for the, the several primes contractors, that would be the general contractor, electrical, plumbing, and so on. So, but if there are any questions or anything that needs to be discussed or further-
Would there be any-
It would be just a simple matter, a series of resolutions, but, you know, I, I do respect that this council has been very diligent in doing most of their work in committee meetings, and that's why I asked for that.
That's fine, and that's fine, I don't have a problem doing it that way, but my concern was, there may or may not, because of what's going on and how we want to move this along, if there was some action that needed to be taken at the next council meeting, if we have this discussion at the council, I mean, we, in other words, we may want to have the discussion before, if you think there's going to be something you're going to ask us to do at the council meeting.
Well, we would, it would be the intent to ask you to pass the resolutions to, to adopt these contracts for-
So that's why I was, I was thinking that we could hair it out before the council meeting, and then when we get to the council meeting, we act on-
That sounds, yeah, no, that's good.
And to that extent, this may be premature, we have not gotten the bids back yet, but I just wanted everyone to be aware and-
I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, so we're set then, and Ms. Zembol set that up, and thank you very much, Dirt and Joe, too bad you weren't in New York, take care of that blackout. The mini baby boom that's going to happen, well, thank you for that. Second item is introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Approximately 1.4 Acres, More or Less, as Determined by Survey of Real Property by the County of Northampton and Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania, for Norfolk Southern Railway Company." Is there someone who would sponsor this resolution? Ms. Zirinsky will sponsor this resolution. Is there a second? Mr. Werner will second this res- this, sorry, ordinance, not resolution, ordinance. We'll have a public hearing, debate, and possible vote at the August 1st meeting. Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution, Department of Human Services at Gracdale. Mr. McGee, would you take this?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Secretary Two, Gracdale Social Services and Nursing, pay grade CS-15, salary $33,124, and the Department of Human Services, Gracdale Nursing Home, be upgraded to one full-time position of Nursing Administrative Assistant, pay grade CS-17-1A, salary of $36,320, effective July 18, 2019. It was discussed and so moved, that committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. All right, next is consideration of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant Resolution. Mr. Lot, please introduce this.
Hold on, I've got a couple in here that I'll, thank you. Whereas Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency is awarded to County of Northampton a grant totaling $439,600 for the Fresh Start Program for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021. Now, therefore be resolved, Northampton County Council does hereby concur that the county executive accepts the PCCD grant for the Fresh Start Program totaling $439,600 for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. And next we have consideration of a resolution regarding Penn Praxis. Ms. Zirinsky, would you please introduce this resolution? Because I think it's really great that you would introduce this resolution, I'm killing time for you.
No, I got it, I got it. This one. Okay. They're all where I was. Now, therefore, now, do you want me to go to the end?
No, go to the end.
Now, therefore be resolved by the Northampton County Council, one, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Penn Praxis Study Addendum, DNL Trail North Catacqua to Northampton Boroughs Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscape Program, or his designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligation in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $25,000 of livable landscape funding as the Northampton County contribution to the Penn Praxis Study Addendum, DNL Trail North Catacqua to Northampton Boroughs Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
And there was a committee meeting, but this was discussed.
And there was a committee meeting where we already discussed this.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda was a consideration of a pipeline safety resolution, but I believe you're holding off on that.
I am.
Okay, so we will defer that at this time.
Deferred.
Next, we have consideration of Article 13, Contract Resolutions, A, Prime Care Medical, Inc., B, Mid-Atlantic Rehabilitation Services, Inc., and C, Nailiv, Nailiv?
Nailiv.
Nailiv Bridge Corporation, DHT Lyons. First, we have Prime Care Medical, Inc., and Mr. Werner, would you please introduce this?
Yes, I will. Now therefore be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive, is set forth in the attached documentation to approve contracts, Prime Care Medical Incorporated, so moved, to council. Had quite a good discussion and quite a presentation.
Very good. I see we have representatives, and we have some of the big hitters from prison here. Any discussion on this?
Just, just to repeat some of the things I said yesterday, I think Prime Care does an excellent job, I think there's great things in this contract, but I'm still concerned about the length of it, the seven years, and then the three additional, that's 10 years. So somebody that could get elected to council this year might never get to see this contract again, from a collective or an RFP standpoint. So I, I like the things in it, I think Prime Care has done good work under a less-than-ideal facility, but I would have preferred to see this have been five years with some options, so that's my only concern.
My understanding from the meeting was, though, they didn't think we'd get this price if it was less than seven years. I mean, am I fairly accurate in that? I wasn't sitting in on the discussions, like, part of the negotiations was the time factor. I thought that's what, no, you can come up, I, I don't know, I'm just, to Mr. Kuzic's concern, I mean, a side of that might be that you feel you got a better price because of the time.
Absolutely. I think the extension, and also, we're going 15 to 30 for, our limitation for our residents protects our residents inside, if duty-bound for hospitalization, so that's important. So the seven years, and if there is a discussion, if something does happen, we also have a pull-out clause, so we would, you know, keep that in mind, but the seven years does help us, it gives us a steady price, gives us a base price, so then we're working with, so we did have some good competition also, so there was a lot of players involved, so the seven years does help us.
Okay, I was just, I thought that was, came out at the committee. Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Lot?
I just want to commend you guys, I think it's an excellent contract, I think if you can get stability in healthcare, that the county can count on for the next seven years, I think, you know, I'm kind of feeling, with due respect, John, but I'm kind of seeing it from the other side, that wow, we can lock in our prices for seven years, so I certainly will be supporting it, but thank you.
And we also know that there's an opt-out clause.
Yeah, with the price.
With, yes.
All right, well, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you. You're not off the hook that easy, Mr. Werner. Next, we have the Mid-Atlantic Rehabilitation Services, Inc., and Mr. Werner?
Yes, this is a contract for $120,600. Now therefore be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive, is set forth in the documentation to approve the contract with Mid-Atlantic Rehabilitation Services Incorporated, and it was moved forward. Very much discussed.
Yes, yes, is there any further discussion on this particular contract? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Werner?
Yes, the Nailiv Bridge, the contract is for $658,386.79, 12 firms accepted the bid documents, and two firms submitted their bids. There are, this is for three bids, Bridge 93, Bridge 118, and Bridge 226. Now therefore be resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive, is set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Nailiv Bridge Corporation, so moved.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?